Good evening, like to call our school committee meeting to order on October, this night, October 3rd, 2018. A just reminder for everyone that we are being broadcast live on Douglas Cable as well as a recorder for future rebroadcast. Could we all please rise for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, we do not have a student representative tonight, so we'll have lots to catch up on in our next meeting with them. Public comment and communication, we welcome public comment on items that are not within the scope of the school committee's responsibilities, that are within, sorry, not are within. The public comment agenda item is reserved for this purpose. Anyone here, anything that's on our agenda? Okay, thank you. With that, any old business anyone wants to discuss tonight? Any new business? Okay. Superintendent's report, Mr. Mainz.
Very good, thank you. So, the first thing, I forgot to put this on just for informational purposes, and I did put at your place a copy of the schools and trade establishments that were here for our college fair, which was last week, which was available to sophomores, juniors, and seniors. You have a list at your place, it was a great job. Jill, I wanted to give a shout out to Jill Carpenter and Kristen O'Brien for their work on it. It went very well, it gives all of our students an opportunity to get around to different tables, talk to different schools, gather information, you know, strongly encourage them to ask questions, which is not something that sophomores like to do a whole lot, but we do try to force them to get out there and ask some questions and grab some literature and get some questions answered. So, just wanted to let you know that that did take place last week, it went very well, and to acknowledge Jill Carpenter and the guidance department for that. The next thing, the first thing on the agenda that we had is, we haven't talked about it, but we probably should be thinking about forming a committee. I have talked with the members of the DTA. One of the things that was in the contract, as you recall, was to revise Appendix C, but also to revise the grid that goes with the salary structure for the teachers. As you recall, there are 11 steps and all the way up to a master's 60 for salary grid, but there's a noticeable jump between year 10 and year 11, and we experienced that a couple of years ago, and which it had an impact on the budget making and so forth. And so, one of the things that we've all sort of agreed to is to sit down and look at whether there's a different structure, whether we want to revise what's presently there, whether we want to add additional steps. So, we really should be thinking about getting that started. We did say that we would try to get it started in October, so I'm not sure what the makeup is, I didn't know what the committee was thinking as to the makeup of the group that would be sitting down and working on it. Ms. Keegan and I would be there, but I didn't know if one of the members of the board will want to be there, and I also thought I'd like to throw it out to one of the members of the administrative team as well to sit in on it. So, just something to be thinking about, but I would like to start this, you know, somewhere after the middle of the month of October, once I can get them to confirm what they're looking for, for a structure as well. But I just want to have that out there for you to be thinking about it, if you think you might. The issue, I think, is going to be that my sense is that meetings will probably be after school rather than at night, so probably 3:00, 3:15 would be the time that we would probably meet for those meetings. So, if that would work with somebody's schedules, that might be helpful as well.
Okay. Anyone here interested in how that works with their schedule?
That's not going to work for me.
I didn't say anything about who's going to be on. I'm responsible, yeah.
Okay, I think we have to get some thought to that, and we'll try to settle it by next week.
Okay. And again, the idea was, be thinking about that big jump was the biggest issue that we had.
So, my one thought when you started talking about this was that we do already have a negotiations subcommittee, I'm not sure if this falls under the purview of that or if there should be something separate outside of that.
It could, absolutely it could.
Which, I think, brought up a point, and I don't think we settled it last time, but you had mentioned to me that we only have me on our negotiations subcommittee team right now, and should we have a second person on there?
Right.
I think we talked about it, or we talked about it, one of us talked about it.
Yeah, we did.
Yes, we did, yep.
So, I know Kelly, you had mentioned it earlier, if you want to, you're still up for it, so it's new to all of us at this point, so do you want to settle that right now, so?
Yeah, that would make some sense, if that's what the committee would like to do, is to create a subcommittee negotiating committee, that would be great, we could, hopefully we can get it nailed down really quickly, I hope.
Yeah, and then we'll have to work out the schedule of the 3:00, 3:15, and things can be tough for me at least, I'm not sure about you Kelly, but yeah, it sounds like it might be for all of us, so we'll have to figure that out. So, I'd be looking for a nomination for someone, anyone?
I'll nominate Kelly Grady to negotiating subcommittee, is that what it is?
I believe so, if that's exactly the name, we know what you're talking about. Okay, nomination from Julian, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Lisa, any other discussion? All is in favor? Aye. All right, so we have that settled, thank you.
So, then we'll tentatively plan that, I'll tell them that we're thinking that it would be the negotiating committee that would be sitting with them, and like I said, we'll probably bring another administrator on as well.
Sounds good, thank you.
All righty, thank you, and that was unanimous, okay. So, that was one thing to keep on mind, if I could call Mrs. Socia, come up. Friday is a professional development day, and a lot of time and energy and a lot of collaboration has gone into this process. I don't want to steal any of the light from Mrs. Socia, because she's had to, taken the lion's share of it, but one of the things that, as you recall, was a conversation piece, was when we were negotiating as well, was that they were looking, the Douglas Teachers Association was looking to have some input and be part of the process. And so, what the final version is, does involve their input and their opportunities to select the different workshops that they would like to attend. So, Cindy can tell you a lot about the plan, and then we can answer questions if you have it.
Okay, well, you just took my lead in, is how.
That's what I tried to do.
It started like last spring, really, to put this together and to get the speakers, the quality of the speakers that you really want, because there are so many schools right now that have that day off, it's difficult finding presenters. So, more and more schools are now going to the Tuesday after Columbus Day because of that, so something to think about down the road. So, we did listen to the DTA and their needs, and that's how we came up with a lot of these, so the administrative team have been working on this, and I apologize for being a nag all last spring and all of this fall, because I know that it's difficult to line these people up, but, you know, you have to get it done to, in order to have the selections that we have. And this is a whole different process, we haven't quite done it this way before, where the teachers can choose the session they'd like to go to. In the past, it's been a building-based selection, where the principal might say, I'd like to have this, you know, speaker come in, or I want this topic, but now we opened it up, and pretty much everyone could sign up. So, and then I bit off even more by doing it online for the first time, so we used, tried something new. It worked pretty well, there were a few little glitches here and there, but of course, there would be. It's called skedge.com. We have a license through the Blackstone Valley Curriculum Group that I belong to, so that we were able to do that, and so, you know, they've used it, and they help each other out, and so, one of the superintendent, actually from Hope Dale, said, oh, I like your site, it looks really nice, you know? So, you're able to put in the presenter, you're able to put in a description of the workshop, things to bring, things that they'll learn there, and then a whole write-up of the speaker. So, we have math, a math workshop at the primary school, and actually, I have met this presenter, we brought her in about six years ago through the Blackstone Valley, it was a summer, so there were a few of our teachers that attended, and they just loved it. So, and it's all hands-on, and it's just full, the packet is like 50 pages long of just games and activities, and using dice, and cards, and number sense, and things like that, so that's going to be really fun. That's the one, of course, I'm going to be at, because, you know, me and my math. Teacher's one of the Google Classroom, we've had that in the past, and again, some of the newer teachers since then haven't been trained on it, a lot of the elementary teachers would like that. We have a presenter coming in for Google and that, from the collaborative. And then we have our social emotional for Paris, that title had been tweaked, I think, since your copy, and we're leaning into more the strategies of the social emotional learning for paraprofessionals. And that presenter presented this summer in Millbury through the Blackstone Valley. Two of our nurses went to that to get their PDPs, and they absolutely loved this presenter. So, we've worked with her, she came last January, she did an introduction for Paris into social emotional learning, so now this is like the next step for them. Also, for teachers, we have another social emotional for them, and this is BJ Cataldo, she's through Boston College, she's an adjunct professor. All these people have been in education for like 30, 35 years, have been doing this for a long time. At the middle school, Mr. Delaney would like to do the integration of technology in the classroom, where they might talk about flipping the classroom, they're going to talk about different apps and resources to get that to blend right into your instruction. So, one of our own teachers, Jess Finley, will be presenting with Mr. Delaney and Mr. Aronian. And we have a co-teaching workshop at the high school, and this presenter is an author of her own book on co-teaching. Every participant will get a copy of the book at the workshop, so she was kind of hard to get, but we did, we got her. We offered music teachers a workshop through the LSDO, which is a similar group to the Blackstone Valley group, but we don't belong to it anymore, just because their meeting's just difficult to attend, and so, we have to pay per person, but they still open it up to us, which is nice. So, our three music teachers will be going out to a music conference in Foxborough. Same thing with our nurses, they have a conference, it's going to be in Milis, it's through the LSDO, and it's Children's Hospital is sponsoring. And there was one other one on gender training, no one signed up for that one, it was a two-hour workshop in Northbridge. So, we did kind of tie into the Blackstone Valley, but we had a lot going on ourselves here. And we have all the sign-ups, so the nice thing about the online is, I get the roster for every session, so we know who's going, they can check it off, I can do my lists from that. If the presenters wanted to, we could have linked that, we just didn't get there yet, you know, link the list so that they could maybe do a survey beforehand, or something like that. So, I also put the funding sources on here, so that you would know, all of this day is funded through grants, there's nothing else but grant funding. It's Title II-A for most of them, which is the Teacher Quality Grant, and then there is a new grant, Title IV-A, and that is Student Support and Academic Enrichment, and the SEL is covered under that. We might use it, and our grant for this one is really small, it was like $9,000, but it covers the SEL, we can bring in somebody for bullying, or vaping, or jeweling, or, you know, there are different areas that it covers, and it also covered the technology, the Google, so very specific guidelines on that, but it's still funding, so it was nice. Right, we'll take it. So, I think that's it in a nutshell.
So, a couple of things with it is, when we had met back towards the end of the school year last year, and the feedback we got from the Douglas Teachers Association was the Google Classroom was something that was, that was something that they really wanted to explore, because they were doing it here at the high school, and it was getting rave reviews. The co-teaching, the special education piece, which they expressed to Mrs. Urcat, and how they want to really work on that. And then the other thing was the social emotional piece for teachers. So, this is more based on working with students with autism and severe, so that was, they got what they're looking for, which I think is great. As you recall, last year, we did the safety last year as our professional development, so this is good that they were able to make their choices here. We also had the Paris attending, which in previous years, we hadn't, last year, we did have the Paris participate, because we were doing the safety, and it just makes sense, and we went back and forth a little bit, and Cindy was really good enough to go out and sort of press the issue, and we moved more towards social emotional and strategies within the classroom, and working with students, and so, that should be a great workshop, a lot of the Paris have signed up for that. So, a lot of good, a lot of good topics, and thanks Cindy for all of her hard work in getting it done, for even putting it online, which I thought was interesting, and it had little captions, and you could read all about it, so people knew what they were signing up for, for the most part. So, we're good to go on a Friday, we're looking forward to a good day, and hopefully, it'll be beneficial for everybody that's attending.
That's good.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on there is the, just an update for you, we are scheduled to do our bus evacuations at all four buildings. The date that we have booked is October the 18th. They'll be doing them in the morning, and they will be doing an evacuation where they will be exiting from the back of the bus, so the idea of jumping down out of the bus and so on and so forth, that'll be with Telstone, and all of the building administrators will be running that and taking care of that, so that'll be October 18th. We'll get information out to parents to let them know that we'll be doing a bus evacuation on that date. And then, I asked Josh, just for a quick update, as you know, we are just around the corner from NEAS, so I wanted to give you the, sort of the final update. The visiting team is, has been assembled, as was mentioned the other day, Patrick Locken, the Assistant Superintendent of Schools in Burlington, is the chair. Josh has been in contact with him, I've been in contact with him, Carolyn Fitzpatrick has been in touch with him. They are visiting on the 14th through the 17th. The final schedule he indicates has been completed. Sunday, the 14th, the presentation will be with the visiting team, starting at 1:00, followed by an interview with the school committee members that are able to make it at 3:00 on the 14th, and then a brief reception at 4:00, because they go back to the hotel and they, and they work all evening long, the members of the NEAS team. So, that's the schedule for the first day. The plan is that they will be visiting with teachers, administrators, they'll also be talking to paraprofessionals, they'll be talking to student groups, so it's all been set up, it's over the course of the three days, and then we should get our final report. The final report will come out with areas of strength, areas where there will be room for growth. One of the things that we should be thinking about as this takes place, is that prior to the June vote last year for the override, a lot of what was in the original NEAS report was linked to budgetary issues. So, they're going to have to really look at that now, with the override having gone through, they'll have to look at it with a lens of, this is what, where we were previously, now they have the override, so they're going to be asking for our feedback on how the override has impacted the school culture and climate as well, and our ability to do what we need to do. So, it'll be a little bit tricky, but they don't seem to think that that's going to be a huge issue. They will address what they uncovered as shortfalls prior to the override, and then they will also obviously address how things have been, how we've been able to address issues with the override. So, that'll be their report, and it's a team, I believe, of 14 educators will be coming to us, and they are staying in Worcester, and so, it should be, we'll see how it goes. But we're ready to go, and it's right around the corner. We've been, this has been a long time in coming, I can remember talking to the faculty meeting seven years ago, talking about getting ready for this, and it got delayed, and it got delayed, it got delayed, mostly on their part, so it's finally here. So, that was everything that I had on the superintendent's report.
Any questions?
So, the timeframe on Sunday, the 14th, you said started at 1:00, and the meeting with the school committee would be at 3:00?
Yes.
So, would that mean we would be here for 3:00, or would we be here all day?
I don't think that you have to be here the whole day, but I would say maybe around 2:30 quarter of, and I will double-check with Josh, and if there's anything other than that, I will text you, email you, let you know that there's a different time of start. Again, I think they meet with you for about 45 minutes, half an hour, 45 minutes. They'll have a target list of questions that they'll ask you, and then that'll be it.
Okay.
Okay.
Questions? All right, move on to school committee and subcommittee reports. That's payable report.
Okay, assigned 12 batches on the 20th for totaling $300,975. Nothing special in there.
And, oops, we did have a budget subcommittee meeting right before our last meeting, so I just wanted to just quickly review the agenda there, report out on it. So, mostly discussing special education concerns, the nursing position that we actually approved last week, the paraprofessional salary adjustments that we approved last week as well, as well as the before and after school music lesson proposal that we also approved last week, so that was the primary agenda. And again, most of it focused on special education trends and needs, which we will be getting to a little bit later here, so just as an idea of what our budget subcommittee focused on last time. With that, we will move to our consent agenda. We finally have our August 15th minutes. Anybody find any concerns with those minutes?
No.
If not, we'll be looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve school committee meeting minutes of August 15th, 2018.
Motion by Julian.
Second.
Second by Kelly. Any other discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, then we have our September 19th minutes, which is our last meeting. I ain't noticed anything here either as well. No one has any amendments, Courtney?
I just didn't know, under the paraprofessional rates, and this might be just a picky-icky thing, it says a discussion was held in the first paragraph, the italicized paragraph, after we discuss about the hourly rates, it says, "A discussion was held, comma, including adding personal days and holidays." I think, I don't know if we want to add the possibility of adding, I don't, you know, we weren't saying we were going to add them, we just were saying we were looking at various options, really.
Yeah, that's.
I mean, I don't want, you know.
That's a good point, yeah.
Maybe just say the possibility.
Yeah.
The possibility, yeah.
The possibility of.
Possibility, okay, thanks.
Of adding personal days and holidays.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
How do these amendments get passed on to, like, do we actually do these, do they get updated online, like, how do we?
I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Kevin, that Lauren will update.
Yeah, Lauren does it.
Yeah, does the updates, and then she does the approve, because you approve them as amended.
Yeah. Mr. Mainz, do you pass the amendments on to Lauren, or is?
Oh, yeah, we, either, either, I do what he, oh, well, then I guess I do.
Somebody will, okay. It's a procedural thing, like, you know, we made amendments in the past, I'm like, should I be passing these on to somebody?
I note them on my documents that she reviews afterwards.
Okay.
Yeah, and I note them as well. We kind of tag team, so that we're both as a backup.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, okay.
All right, so, so we have one amendment there. Anything else? Okay, so, now, we'll be looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes for September 19th, 2018, as amended.
Okay, we have a motion from Julian, second from Lisa, any other discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, yes. All right, so next, we have revision of mentoring stipends.
I don't know if Cindy, if you want to join us again. So, the mentoring, we've had the mentoring program in place, and one of the things that prompted this, and this is why we're coming back to you, is that, as you all are aware, we had some teachers depart, teachers retire, teachers go to other districts, and we brought in quite a number, and the impression was that we hired 15 or 16 teachers, but what we did bring in 15 or 16 teachers, they weren't new teachers, they were replacing people, but that created a problem with regards to mentors being available to mentor all of these new teachers, because usually, we've had, you know, five or six maybe, 15 was an inordinate large number of teachers. So, what we did is, we sat and we talked with the two lead mentors, Stephanie Dagenet and Emily Costa, we met a couple of times about it, went back and forth, and Cindy and sort of spearheaded the idea, can we combine department-wise or building-wise? So, for example, John Wagenheim has three teachers in the science department that are relatively brand-new, one that's one year in, one that's two years in, and one that's three years in. So, rather than having, trying to find three mentors for a science teacher, John is picking up all three of them, so we had to create a salary structure for that, because originally, it was one-to-one mentoring was what was in the original proposal. So, that's the only thing that really changed, is the fact that now some mentors are mentoring more than one person, and so, we need to come up with a salary structure that reflected their work with more than one mentor. So, and this has been run by the DTA, I have assigned documents here for you tonight as well, but also, the lead mentors had shared this with the mentors as well, and everybody seemed to be on board with it. It's just practical, it was more based out of practicality than was anything else, but in order for us to do that, it has to, we had to make an amendment to it, that's why it's in front of you.
Right, and right now, we're still keeping, if it's a first-year teacher that has no experience, we're keeping it as a one-to-one situation with their mentor.
Right.
It's only in years two or three, and then we also added a level four for somebody who's been teaching quite a few years in another district that might come in and just only need to know the basics of the building and the district, things like that. Right now, we have 29 teachers being mentored, because we have to carry them for three years, and our total is almost $10,000, and that was another reason for grouping, because if everyone had a one-to-one, we couldn't afford to do it.
Right.
And again, this is, this is obviously a mandate, it's good practice, but it's also a mandate as well, so.
Who reviews the logs?
Who's the what?
The logs, the binders, who reviews them?
The, oh, the lead mentors.
And they review those to make sure that all these things are actually done?
Yeah, I don't know if you're reviewing them as well, I think it's just the lead mentors.
I've seen them, but it's the lead mentors, and before they get their stipend paid to them, that they have to turn everything in.
So, the focus is teachers, working with teachers to support teachers, and that's why it's really under their review rather than our review.
Right. This came along with Race to the Top many years ago, and we sent these two teachers in, and they took a course and became the lead mentors, and every year, we've tweaked it as we've gone along and changed the guidelines, changed things that didn't work, every year, we've met with them several times.
And then, as Cindy mentioned, with, you know, almost 30 people being mentored, it was getting to be kind of price prohibitive, and we really, so I applaud the members of the Teachers Association for really willing to work with us to make this adjustment, so that we could still provide tutoring and not have it break the bank, if you will.
I know that it's a requirement, is there certain parameters that they put around this, that schools, that school districts have to follow, as far as like the hours and stuff?
Yeah, so we follow that.
Absolutely. Yes, they have to go to an induction, which we do, the opening day, new teacher, that one day that we do right before school starts. They have to keep a log, things like that, and a checklist, and then after that first year, they have to have 50 hours. So, that first year doesn't even count in part of the 50 hours, you'd think it would, but it doesn't, so they definitely have.
Yeah, I was kind of going through it too, but I didn't know if like different.
I was going to ask that question, you must be going.
Yeah, and it's just interesting to see this compared to what I'm going through too, so it's, I didn't know if there was like certain regulations that everyone followed, or everybody kind of did their own thing.
Right, it's up to each district to come up with their own plan, and that's what the lead mentors did as a result of that course.
Right.
And I will say that they've worked very collaboratively with us, and this has been ongoing for five or six years now, maybe more, since we first talked about it, and, you know, there always had been in the profession, somebody who was working with a new person, but it usually was for the first year, and really, to be honest with you, it was really for the first couple of months of the first year, and if you hadn't drowned by then, they figured you were okay. So, this is much more defined, much more supportive, much more detailed, very specific. They follow a template that works very well.
Mm-hmm.
So, and all we're looking for is to, is to just modify that, and it'll go into the Appendix C, and we'll make the notation that it would be a change based on the vote tonight, if that's, if it's agreeable with the committee.
Any questions?
Any other questions?
Oh, let me.
You looking for a motion, then? Yep.
I move to approve the amendments to Appendix C of the Douglas Teachers Association contract pertaining to teacher-mentor stipends is outlined in the attached document entitled Douglas Teachers Association Fiscal Year 2018, Fiscal Year 2020 Contract Revised Teacher-Mentor Stipends Fiscal Year 2019 to 2020/2020. School committee meeting October 3rd, 2018.
Okay, motion from Julie?
Second.
Second from Julian? Any other discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you need all of us to sign all four copies?
Yeah, so what will end up happening is, with all the people that need to have a copy of it, we'll have a copy of it.
Seconded. Julian, I believe.
Julian seconded.
And, you know, while that's going on, I will say that I, again, thank Danielle And, you know, while that's going on, I will say that I, again, thank the Danielle, Hipper, and Julie Tony for their willingness to work with us on this and piecing it together, and I gave them a document, and then I realized that I didn't do the 1.75 COLA, so, Mrs. Keegan gave me another document, and I went back over. They were, they were very gracious, and I think we've got it right, and we're, we're good to go, so thank you, everybody.
So, with that, we're going to move on to special education positions.
Well, Mrs. Urquhart is here, I don't know how many of people are coming up.
I promise you, Deeley will be listening while we're signing.
We can bring a third chair up, if you would like to do.
Good evening, everyone, thanks for having all of us.
Welcome. Sorry.
That's okay. All right, so, to begin, you know, I, I did join the budget subcommittee meeting. I believe that was last week or two.
It was pretty easy.
Time's flying.
Nine eighteen.
Nine eighteen.
A while, yeah. Well, you know, time flies.
Yeah.
Really glad that I went to that. You know, I think the state of, of special education within our district is changing a bit. We are seeing an increase of students who have special education needs moving into the district. So, I think it's, it's very important to have a very forthright approach to, to what we at the district will need to assist the children moving in, and a part of what I know the administration wants to do is make sure that there's a bridge between the school committee and us, and make sure that you guys have all the information that you need to understand, you know, what's going on with all this. So, I did request at that meeting, you know, when, when things come up like this, and we see changes like this, that I do attend, you know, just again to keep you guys informed. So, in saying that, there have been some changes within the last few weeks, since the last time I was up here. Tonight, the proposal will be for three positions. One will be an intensive special needs teacher, one will be a one-to-one ABA therapist, and one will be a paraprofessional. Thought it was very important to have Sky come, especially for the piece with the intensive special needs teacher. The flex center at the elementary school is, that's her, that's her program, and Sky's been doing it for a number of years now, and she's been very successful with it. Like all the other flex centers within the district, there are different tiers, and students fit into those tiers according to their individualized needs. So, to get into a little bit of what you guys have in front of you, four new students have moved into Douglas and are participating in the flex center at the elementary school. The intensive special needs population within the flex center has doubled with this addition. So, the difference between intensive special needs and moderate special needs is that students who have moderate special needs tend to have learning disabilities, you know, and, and they can have some neurological disabilities or health disabilities and things like that. But when you're talking about requiring an intensive special needs teacher, these are students who are categorized as quote-unquote, having severe disabilities, meaning that they might need a little more within their individualized program. I got into a little bit of the detail about, about the students, you can see that in writing. And, so, the increase of demands of these students, as well as the increase of needs from some of the students that existed in the flex center, have made for a very difficult start to the year. We have seen an increase, and, and this is through observation and data within the students that currently were in the program, some, some of them. So, what this has led to, and before I go through this, please know that, that we have really tried to exhaust every avenue before coming here. We've brought the special education team at the elementary school together. We've gone through schedules, we've tried to have people cover other people to assist the kids. We've had teachers from other programs within the district come over. But at this point, we're band-aiding to a point that we are going to burst, and we are, we will be out of compliance. But more than that, the biggest concern is safety, and I think from the write-ups that I, I included, you can understand why. So, what all of this has resulted in is an inability to provide educational and social-emotional services to all the students, an inability to create programs and data collection systems for students with intensive special needs, inability to schedule a prep time for the current teacher within the current schedule, inability to schedule a lunchtime for a large portion of the staff. So, that is not just the teacher, that's the paraprofessionals, as well as the ABA that are in the program. Difficulty formally assessing students due to student behavior, other students' behaviors, meaning that Sky is responsible to formally assess students for three-year reevaluations or initial evaluations. She has not had the opportunity to do any of that at this point, because there have been so many student behaviors, she has been dealing with that. Difficulty taking data for alternate MCAS due to the limited staffing and student behaviors were right at the beginning of this, so, there's not an enormous impact, but if we continue in this trend, this is going to become a very big problem. And now, more than anything, you see a distinction, a distinction between the students that require a life skills program, a behavior program, and a social-emotional program. So, the purpose of the flex center program, and the reason it was created within the district, was to tackle the needs of kids that had social-emotional needs. Within that, you're going to have kids that do have academic needs, as well as some behavior needs. But a life skills program is very different. That's when you're working on pre-vocational skills, that's when you're working on life skills, that's when you're working on functional academics. So, it's a very different population. And then I just wanted to give you guys some further information. So, currently, for grade two, Sky has four students, for grade three, she has six students, for grade four, she has four students, and grade five, she has five students. So, what we see is now we've, we've entered an area where you have four students that fall within the intensive special needs category. We need a program that is focused for those kids. And for Sky to do that alone is irresponsible and wrong, you know, for the sake of the kids and their education. So, if you have any questions, I am happy to answer. Laura is happy to answer, but again, we have Sky up here for a reason, and we want to give you as much information as you need to make this decision.
Question I have...
Yes.
The one thing that made an impression upon me was, was Sky's inability to really have structured academic time, constantly being interrupted. Similar, this sounds very similar to the conversation two years ago...
Yes.
At the high school.
Mm-hmm.
Population number has increased, the demands have increased, and, and as such, much like we, like we had at the high school, there was, there was a clear need to separate and create a second program that was more geared towards the, the needs of the students with intensive needs. That's what we're, what we're saying here.
So, my question, so, these, these students will be completely segregated, will still be some inclusion elements to the program?
Absolutely, absolutely. So, basically, what we're asking, so, inclusion is, is always the goal.
Yeah.
Okay? Inclusion is always the goal, but students within their individualized programs, they have particular needs, whether it be therapies, whether it be different elements of, of their academics. So, there might be times where they do need to be in a particular setting in order to receive those services. The flex center at the elementary school has three classrooms. So, the way Sky's been able to do it is she's had different tiers of kids within different classrooms. So, that will not change what, so, and, and so the programming for the kids will not change, but what will change is the addition, hopefully, of a teacher to assist them. Any questions, anything for Sky?
I've seen it, so I don't have any.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's, it's a classic example of we've gone as far as we can, we've gone as far as we can go, Sky's done as much as she can do, but at some point, you have to take a step back and say, we really need to reflect on this, and is it, is it, is it as effective as we would like it to be?
And, you know, I, I think Laura and I, we, we commend Sky for the work that she's done, and this is no slight on her. It's just gotten to the point that we have a population of kids that have needs that require a little different sort of intervention, and a teacher that has a skill set that's a little different than what Sky has at this point. It would be, just so you know, it would be somebody who has a severe licensure. So, there's moderate, for the DESE, there's moderate special needs, and then there's severe special needs. So, that's how we would post it, is for a severe special needs teacher.
So, do, do we have similar programs at middle school and, and high school? Intensive special needs?
Yep.
Okay. So, these students have someplace to graduate to, that where the program is already set up?
Yep, yep.
So, this is just a...
So, so we have the Stars program at the middle school, we have the Stars program at the high school, and then after they've completed the Stars program, they have the Transition Program, which is the Stripes Program. So, we will have a continuum, continuum of services. To this point, we did not have these needs. So, we didn't need a program like this at the primary school or the elementary school.
So, following up on that, as these kids move on...
Yes.
Are we then looking at developing the intensive needs at the middle school and high school?
They're already in place.
They're already in place, okay.
So, Sky, our, our lack of questions doesn't reflect on you, I think it's, it's very well laid out here already.
Thank you. You're good?
Any questions? All right, I'm looking for a motion, which...
I'll make a motion to approve a 1.0 FTE special education teacher, up to $50,000, a 1.0 FTE special education paraprofessional, estimated at $15,420, and a 1.0 FTE applied behavior therapist, ABA, estimated $20,687, for a total of $86,102, to be funded by the Circuit Breaker account.
Okay, motion from Jillian? Second from Lisa? I, I just want to note, the, the last page of, of this document contains a breakout that we've been talking about with Courtney around additions that we've made to Circuit Breakers since the beginning of the year, as well as school choice. So, just pure information, thank you, Courtney, for that, appreciate that. Do we have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
Who seconded? Lisa?
Lisa, yeah.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Jeanine Amos?
Do you want to talk a little bit about the ABA that, that was just approved, and the parap that was just approved?
So, just to provide you...
I know we talked about it in the subcommittee, but not everybody was able to be there for that subcommittee.
We did. So, we currently have a situation where we have a student that is going to be participating in an evaluation, okay? That evaluation could go in one of two ways, we don't know what the outcome is going to be. There was a one-to-one staff member attached to that student, so the student is currently not within the district, okay? That staff member will be able to satisfy the needs of one of these positions until we know what's going to happen, this is all my thoughts, what's going to happen.
So, just wanted you to be aware that temporarily, this, we're not going to fill that position, but it's very conceivable that down the road, we will have to fill that position. But it is a need, but right now, it's, the reason why it isn't, it, it, the need is, is being satisfied is because we have someone who is out of district for, for a short period of time, so...
Yeah, and in the event that we don't need to fill the position, it'll be because we have a new out-of-district placement.
You got it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Makes sense.
Yep.
All right, guys, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sky, thank you for coming tonight.
So, that brings us to the end of our consent agenda, so I'll hand it over to Ms. Keegan.
They blessed you before it comes. Well, I have a reclassification for you this evening, that's something that Jean Lovett, the Finance Director Town Accountant, and I have never seen in our entire careers. Nobody at DOR has ever seen this, and no one at DESE has seen this. I did put a note on here, I felt very strongly about putting a note on this, I won't read it and be lager, but it has taken up an enormous amount of time on my behalf and Jean's behalf, I want to thank Jean for her willingness. I will tell you, and I don't mind saying publicly, that I did tell Jean when this came up, that I would stand by her a thousand percent if she found that she could not do it without an extreme, you know, it just couldn't be done, I said I would back her from here to Timbuktu on that. I don't want to get into the whole story, it'll take about an hour to tell you, it's taken an enormous amount of time to, to get to this point. I hope we never see anything like this again, but for the public, I just, just so that the public will know what I'm talking about, the federal government, this has nothing to do with the state, we did receive a grant, as you recall, last year for the EL students that, that moved in from Puerto Rico from the hurricane. And we did receive a little bit of funding last year, we spent it last year, or you were actually able to, you were actually able to carry over those funds into this year. In fact, we're, I'm working with Mrs. Nasudi and coming up with some various options on curriculum for EL students, if that's how they, you know, feel that the monies would be well-spent. But then, all of a sudden, on September 21st, the federal government notified DESE, who notified us, that, this is $13,365 for us, but this is throughout all of Massachusetts communities, and I believe throughout the entire nation, that you're getting this grant, but it must be spent on fun, on expenditures from the prior fiscal year, which, as you know, Jean and I worked very hard, close out, for good reasons, you want to close out, she has to submit her balance sheet, Schedule A, I have an end-of-the-year report, we have deadlines, we have audits. I won't get into, into any other specifics, but we actually were, actually, I don't mind saying this, forced to do things that otherwise we wouldn't be allowed to do. So, I'm, both of us are very, just not pleased with this, to be perfectly honest with you, but then we thought we would get flapped for not doing it, we kind of were, you know, you, you, but I hope we never see anything like this again, and if we do, I think we are going to be storming the State House and say, we've got to push back more on the federal government. I do want to say, this is not a deal, I felt really bad for the Department of Revenue, I felt really bad for DESE and everybody that had to get, that got sucked up into this, including me and Jean and everybody else across the entire state. But, so, we are going to reclass $13,365 of, oh, we have of an EL teacher salary at the high school. The DOR did speak with Jean today regarding how she must do it, because it's extremely unconventional how we're being forced to do it. So, here we are. So, but again, I hope we never see anything like this again. So, ultimately, because again, the way it was handled, you know, it, it will leave, you know how I bring, I do the reclasses from the prior fiscal year FY18 down to zero, which, again, we want to thank the town for allowing us to do that. Now, it's going to pop it back up to say that we will have three, $13,365, so we'll have to redo, I don't know, Jean and I haven't gotten that far discussing that. So, am I going to have to redo my report or something, I don't know. I guess it'll have to roll out at the end of this year into free cash somehow, and the DESE just said, we just pop it into the end-of-the-year report, and, yeah, just, yeah, I don't want to say anymore about it. Really, been three weeks of, yeah, and I hope I never see anything like this again. So, with that, I won't say another word, but you see what I've written there. I wrote it there for a reason, I want it on record.
Any questions?
Oh, you don't want to ask me any questions, you don't want to hear anymore, believe me.
All right, so I, I move that we approve the Emergency Impact Aid Number 312 at school committee meeting, October 3rd, 2018, for fiscal year 2018 special reclassification.
Any motion from Julie?
Second.
Second from Kelly. Any other question, discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Jeanine Amos? Thank you.
Don't thank us, but thank, thank to me.
Appreciate you having to deal with this for us, so...
Um, who seconded that, please?
Kelly did.
Okay, sorry, I'm not putting attention too good tonight.
Um, that brings us to the end of our agenda, but we do have...
That brings us to the end of our agenda, but we do have one more thing in our packet. Were you planning to discuss this, Mr. Maines? Educational Alliance?
Is that the trip information?
I don't know.
No?
It's a trip, I think, right?
No.
No, this is.
That's it.
Oh, that was just for your.
Discussion outcomes from.
Yes, that's, that's the documents that they sent out, basically explaining the services that have been provided and will be provided for you to review.
Oh, okay.
For our review.
All right.
Under topics not anticipated.
Yeah, other topics not anticipated.
As you recall, two weeks ago, we approved the before and after-school instrumental lessons. But originally, when it was, when the DTA turned it over to me, it was missing some of the details. It reflects what you voted. I had to correct it. So, this is the actual document that you can now sign that would authorize the 2298 that we approved for the instrumental lessons.
Okay.
It didn't include language on before and after school, when they, when they gave it to us. And we didn't have time to revise it. So, I just corrected it so that it was, it had said before and after, and the number was, they, they used the number for the 2018 number. It should have been the 2019 number. So, that's all. That's why I just wanted to get you guys to sign off on it. I didn't bring it last time, because it needed to be changed.
Just while we're here and signing this, just wanted to give a shout-out to our high school athletic boosters for their golf tournament. I attended. Mr. Maines was there. It was a great time. It was a very successful event. So, congratulations to you on that. And I hope it works out well. It's a good show.
A lot of hard work. So, obviously, it is their premier fundraising activity yearly, and it didn't disappoint the group. Some fun.
All right. So, we are going to have executive session tonight to discuss the possibility of extending Mr. Maines on into the future. So, we will, excusing everybody except the school committee and Mrs. Keegan, and we'll stick around for that discussion. Mr. Maines gets to go home early tonight.
Have a cereal.
Yeah.
It's a special night, because the pumpkin Cheerios are out now.
Pumpkin Cheerios. Mrs. Keegan, do you have that?
It's not funny.
Sign that as well.
Oh, yes.
Do that afterwards, okay.
It could be worse. I could be stopping and getting the big sandwich and going right to bed, right?
No. Cereal is the only thing.
I think I have some verbiage to read here, regards to executive session.
Get it straight here.
Right, so.
Straight at the butt.
We will be entering executive session to discuss the strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the governmental body, and to conduct collective bargaining. So, we will need a roll call vote to intercession. And we will not.
Discuss.
We will not come back to open meeting following, is that the right verbiage?
Yeah.
Following the conclusion of our executive session.
Only to adjourn.
Only to adjourn. Correct. Thank you. I've known this a while.
Roll call vote.
All right, roll call vote.
Kelly Grady, aye.
Kelly Motor.
Brett Ogil, aye.
Julian Caniar, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye.
Great, thank you.